Good evening. It's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome those of you that are joining us. We're here, the Board of Selectmen is here. Karen Fitzpatrick will be talking about ARPA. Amy Monahan is here taking minutes and our Zoom hostess, Crystal Adams is joining us. So I'd like to welcome you joining us on Zoom. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to ask you to approve the minutes of our January 20th Board of Selectmen's meeting. And one of the things there's, well, it's on your agenda, add a link to view the recording of the meeting and also the minutes of February 9th, the special meeting. And I would like to mention on the February 9th meeting, there was a typo. And it's on number two B and it's basically the word due. So it's due, D U E, to being reevaluation year, et cetera, et cetera. So other than that, what are your feelings about approving the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes. This is listed in the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I have one more correction.
Sure.
On the January 20th, item three A. The letter that we got from Planning and Zoning didn't ask us to review both of the proposals. It asked us to decide along with the P and Z Commission. I've got the.
Wait, no, you're correct. But the issue was that there was another proposal, which I thought we, since we have to approve this, you should be aware of there were two proposals.
Okay, well then we need to fix that sentence because it sounds like the P and Z folks made a choice, but then gave us both proposals to make a selection from, and that's really not what was intended.
Okay.
General enforcement hasn't proven to move forward with affordable housing, we cock period after me cock.
Okay.
And then how about if we take out and an ass and the board review the proposals from both me cock.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. It so with that correction, I also second the motion.
Okay, and I agree unanimous. Is there anybody here that would be available to share an update on ARPA? Anybody perhaps? Yes. Karen?
Good, good evening. Okay, so I'm just gonna kind of do a small recap of the last couple of meetings first. Just so that if people were not able to attend or able to read the minutes. So on January 6th, 2022, the Selectmen elected the standard allowance of the revenue loss in the final rule guidelines, which means that we can use the ARPA funding that we are receiving for general government services and use that as revenue loss to the town. On January 20th, the Selectmen voted on phase one for the proposed projects with the funding from ARPA in the amount of 1,000, 1,085,000. And that was brought to the Board of Finance at their February 8th meeting where we they accepted that plan as well. And we're already underway with ordering radios and the Scott self-contaminated breathing apparatus devices. I know we've started some of the HVAC here at the Town Hall. And Muddy Brook has also started ordering some of the parts for their rescue struts and the bags.
Yeah.
So other than that, the only thing I really wanted to talk about this evening is since our last meeting, we got a few more proposals in that I know that we'll be looking at when we get into phase two, which most likely won't be until after June because we don't even have the second half of the funding yet. But I just wanted you to be aware. So we did receive a request from the Northeast District Department of Health. They did not ask for a specific amount. They have a goal and they are trying to reach 634,620 dollars. And they are hoping that each participating town contributes so they can reach their goal. If, when I looked at the district and the number of towns, that would be approximately, if if all these towns that I looked up were still, are still part of that, it would be approximately $53,000 per town in order for them to accomplish that goal.
The goal is for?
The goal is for, I can read you some of the items here. So they are looking for. Do you want me to read all the amounts or just give you an overview? So it's basically, yeah, it's basically just for positions. They need new vaccinators. They need to update full-time secretary receptionist positions. They're looking for equipment like laptops and mobile phones, things of that nature, secure email. Also, they're looking for some training and some software.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions on that one? Okay. Next, we have an official proposal from the trustees of Rosen Park. And their request from ARPA is 380,500 dollars. And I can give you, they're looking to replace their or update their driveway entrance access parking. They would like to have an ADA compliant playground construction with the equipment, removal of dead trees. They would like to renovate the heated bathrooms and the clubhouse. They're looking for upgrading their water pump and irrigation system for a community garden. Reconstruction of two access bridges. Extending electrical service to utility shed at the driving range and install artificial turf tees for each hole. And they're hoping to have that completed by 2024. Any question? No? Okay. I received another one from our emergency management director, Dave Elliott. He is requesting that the town purchase four organizational command boards, which would be at each firehouse. He's they, these to help with tasks. So that way, when there's a call, they know what what piece of equipment went out, who responded to the call. He said they're very helpful when there's a, when there's a big emergency with a lot of different responding departments. Those, he said they're very similar to a dry erase board or a smart board or something like that. And it's geared specifically for fire and EMS. Those are approximately for four units, 7,220 dollars. And it would be three fire and EMS. They're averaging about 1,800 a piece, but the total was 7,220. Okay. The next proposal I received again is from Bungie Fire Brigade. They're looking to purchase a new Ranger. The one that they have is very old. It's a 2006 Polaris and they're looking to upgrade that. These other machines that they use when they are looking for people, search and rescue in the woods. They have med beds and things of that nature. The approximate cost would be 18,000, 586, 92. I want to just make mention that I did speak with Michael Dougherty about this, and he said that if this is the case, he'd like to talk to the other fire departments to see if they have a need to upgrade and then maybe we could go out if we were to use this bid for three of them or something like that, that were all universal, so anybody could drive it. The other thing we were kind of briefly talking about last night is our recreation director purchased new software. And we found out that we can purchase software with ARPA funding because that does mitigate the spread of COVID because people can do more online services. That cost was 7,112 dollars. And we would like to reimburse the recreation department with ARPA funds for that software. And the last biggest one is from the Woodstock Volunteers. They're looking for a total of 307,178 dollars.
The fire department?
Yep, this is just Woodstock Volunteer Fire Department. Yep. And what what it is that they're looking for is a new ambulance. It, the current one that they'd like to replace is a 2010. And that's approximately 265,000. And the other part of that for 42,178, 36 is these are, I think, additional like trade-in striker power purchase cord. I don't really understand what these are, but I think it's just accessories that go with the ambulance, like restraint holders, retractable head section, equipment hookup. So I believe it's just all the additional accessories that go with the fire. I'm sorry, with the ambulance. So that total again is 307,178, 36. I do have, I mean, if if either one of you would like copies, just let me know and I can make them for you. And a couple of other ones, I just wanted to run by you. So a while back, which is on our actual list that's on our website of ideas from citizens of Woodstock, but I just wanted to tell you, we received a, an official proposal from WPCA for engineering so they can start looking into updating, I guess it's their pump station? Is that what I'm understanding? WPCA?
Yes, down, it's, it's the pump, the only one they have down by Southwood.
So right now, the engineering cost is about 100,000. Yeah. That too is on our previous list that we've been having in circulation. Another one that's also been on our list, I just wanted to run by you was Teague. Teague is looking for 10,000 per year for four years and they were planning on using that funding to be able to hire part-time staff to help with the services that have increased during COVID.
That was how much for four years?
10,000 per year for four years, so 40,000 total.
I think there were also, and I don't know this to be true, but I think there were also a few other towns that they serve.
And the other two, one of them is the ARC. They were requesting at one time contribution of 2,000 and that just helps them be able to continue services that they provide for their workers and that type of stuff. And then the same was TVCCA, which is our Meals on Wheels. Now normally they ask for $3,000 in our budget, but they didn't this year. They only asked for the driver fees and they're asking the $3,000 fee for support to come out of ARPA. And then we did receive one from NEPS. But I could not, I don't know if I misplaced it, but I will find it because I still have a stack of papers. But I know that it was a very small amount that they were asking. I think it was less than 2,000. They were just hoping to be able to continue some of their training and services. I haven't, other than Taylor Brooke, I really, and she didn't give us, she didn't specify amount. I haven't had any businesses right, oh, I did one, Woodstock Camp, the Y.
Camp Woodstock.
Yeah, Camp Woodstock. And they are just looking for some kind of funding to be able to put back into their businesses that they felt they lost during COVID. But some of those expenses that they incurred during that loss doesn't fit these timeframes that this program allows us. But we can also give out, you know, down the road, if you choose to, you can give small businesses and nonprofits grants. We don't have an application process yet. I'm looking at other towns, but you know, that's something we can decide down the road in phase two, how you want to move forward with the rest of the funding.
The other thing you have to remember also with these grants to either businesses or nonprofits is we have to monitor. So we don't just give them a check for 10 grand and say, you know, good luck. We have to monitor how that is spent because we have to report back to the treasury. So it's.
And we have to have all the, we have to have all the backup. They have to give us a proposal, let us know. Yeah.
So just so you know.
If we were to do that kind of thing, it would make sense to give the funding to an organization that already has to have that kind of requirement.
Right.
In, in what they do. For example, and I only say this because I used to have to be the one to do it. The Last Green Valley has a huge level of audit that it has to maintain every year. So it organizations like, well, the towns, if they contributed to something like that, they're not always set up to do the audit would be easy for them to do. And then they would distribute funds to a larger area of the public, you know, that kind of thing. It's harder when it's something that's really specific, but.
But Teague does it too. So like Teague, for instance, every year when they send us their budget, they send us the, a big list of all the services, how many people they provide for Woodstock. They send us, I don't know, it's like an annual review and yeah, and United Services does that. I also.
Copies of their audits.
They give us copies of the annual reports, yes. I don't know if it's an actual audit, but no, they give us copies. We go request them.
Usually the financial statements in an annual report are audited statements. Okay.
So I mean, as long as we have them.
Income and expenses, you know, where the money came from, how it went. So, yeah.
But I, some of the things that like I, I find it's very important to help people in our community first. People, I mean, I know that the Camp Woodstock does a great job, but that's the greater Hartford why? I don't know if they've already gotten funding. That's something we'd have to look into. They have a location here in Woodstock, but then we also had a proposal from 4H. We know that some kids go there.
They approached every town that has children. Yeah, exactly. They're damn.
Yep. So.
Actually, you know, a lot of kids do go there. I mean, actually, my kids go there.
Yep.
Generations have gone. So there's not going to be a, we're not going to have to scrape around looking for appropriate recipients. Not going to be.
No, and we also do have a lot of capital projects for the town that we haven't been able to address because of funding. So that might be something to take into consideration too. As we navigate, you know, where we're going to be taking out a bond for our first bridge project, which is four out of 12. So we'll still have eight more bridges that we have to look into to be repaired.
What about, any word about what's going to happen with infrastructure money?
I'm still waiting because we've, we, we outreach to Pat Boyd because we got something sent to us that was called RACE.
Yeah.
Which I guess has been around since 2010, but it was under a different name. And that particular, so I had talked to John Navarro and asked him if he wanted to sit through a webinar with me because it's a competition. It's not like they're just going to give you. You have to, you have to have a real good project and write it up. And then there was a deadline by, I think it was April 14th, and then they would select their candidates in August. But the problem was when I went to go log into the webinar, it said it wasn't taking anymore because it was too many people. But that one, Pat Boyd said is, might be part of the infrastructure, but that there's going to be two. If I understand correctly, there's going to be two different sectors. There's going to be one where the money goes to the US, from the US Treasury to the state.
Yeah.
And they might do a, you know, population or a formula.
Yeah.
And then this other raised one is like above and beyond. So.
So I know that the state government has been talking about all the things that it's going to do, he's going to fix, et cetera. So what I wondered was, are we talking about the same pot of money or is there a separate pot that's going to be distributed to the community?
Separate other than ARPA?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
We think so, but we don't know, but we don't know much about the details yet. That's why, I mean, we definitely got our hands full with phase one. And we have a while to really think about this. But at least we know what's here and we'll be reviewing it, I guess, continuously when we're ready to start. I mean, we're not getting funding until June. And I'd like to think we're going to get exactly what they told us, but I still like to wait. I don't want to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend obligating any funds till we have it.
That would be a good idea either. So change in a second.
Yep, but right now I don't have, I've been really focusing more on budget. So I've had to kind of put a little bit of this on the back burner for a couple of days. So that's really all I have for today for ARPA. I don't know if anybody has any other specific questions.
Questions about ARPA?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. And if anybody wants any copies, just email me and I will print them out.
Copy.
I know. Well, we're used to making sure we have copies of everything.
Okay. Let's see. Thanks, Karen.
Okay, I'll see you next week.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, number four, affordable housing. This is a program that's been going on forever. We so far have received 277 responses in the public survey. The deadline is to submit is for March 1st. We, the town of Woodstock, we have to come up with a plan. It's being handled through Planning and Zoning. Delia Fay with NICAG has been coming up with this plan. And the paper ballots, if you will, are available at the Town Hall, all the libraries and at Sweet Ovalinas. And in our minutes tonight, I had given a copy of this and it's been in previous minutes, Amy's had it there. So we're asking people to complete the survey.
It's a good survey too, by the way.
Okay.
It was well designed, I thought.
Well, that's Delia Fay.
Yes.
Okay, we, as you know, in fact, we found out, you were the first, I think, in a state to know because they had gotten word 17 minutes before one of our meetings about the two districts, the 50th District and the 52nd. 50th District is Pat Boyd is the state rep, 52nd is Kurt Vale. I've been in constant contact with Kurt since the week after this all came together. We met on Tuesday night. He came here last night and met with folks with the Republican Town Committee. And it was a meet and greet type thing. What we're doing is we're working in conjunction with the town attorney, with the registrars, and we have to come up with an ordinance that we, the three of us will approve. And it's going to have to go to a town meeting. There's a question if it's a, if it's going to be an ordinance or a resolution. I think it's going to be an ordinance. This has happened to other towns and other town attorneys have been working on this. Once we get, well, we back up, we're going to be warning of a town meeting.
Just so that we don't confuse anybody who might be following us.
Yeah.
This is a different, a new agenda item that we're adding to the agenda. Yes.
Well, I've got number five, and I've got Jay's agenda only. So. Okay.
That's okay. I just, I just.
You want me to drop it and go later?
No, 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 no. Just for the sake of anybody listening to us.
Okay.
Just so that they know that this was in addition to the printed agenda.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, we will be, we're probably going to have, have two town meetings. We'll probably have one in late March, specific to this, and we have about eight to 10 items that have to go to a town meeting. Our annual meeting, which is primarily for budget, is in May. The date has yet to be set. So we may end up warning this town meeting, specific to this ordinance, maybe on March 3rd. But I don't know because it's all coming together and it's coming together quickly, but there's bits and pieces that we're not sure about.
And why do we have to have this?
Because our ordinance now says that our poll is the Town Hall. The poll from now on, because of the two districts, will have to be the gym at the middle school because it's larger. The gym will be split in half. So when you walk in, they're going to ask for your address and it's not going to be Smith Street, it's going to be 29 Smith Street. So they're going to say to you, oh, miss, you're 29, go to this side. And you're 27, so you go over here.
Okay, so this, the town meeting is for the purpose of establishing a different poll in place.
Yes, but there may be some other parts to that town meeting.
Right. Okay.
So anyway. Um, the other thing, I'm going to quote something I said, geez, I lose half my crowd. Thank you.
Jokes weren't good enough.
I guess I know what we rate.
Yeah. One good thing, and I'm and I'll, I'll say this to you and to those of you at home. And I got this basically from Kurt. He mentioned it again last night. He met it, he mentioned it when we met, but he mentioned it last night. The good thing about this is Woodstock will now have two representatives representing our interests in Hartford. So I think, you know, that is good. So stand by to stand by on that. No, let's see, announcement. No, you know what? I'm going to stick, I'm going to go back Charlie into what you said, some of these things should be announcements. So I'm going to wait. How about if we consider the appointment of the following? I've got Cynthia Mortimer. She's going to be the Conservation Commission Alternative, Alternate Representative to Open Space Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee. So what are your feelings about Ms. Mortimer?
I, I make a motion that we appoint her to that position.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we're reappointing four burning officials. These folks have recently completed recertification by DEEP. And it's Richard Barron, Rustow, Dave Elliott and Tim Young. So I would ask for your support in reappointing them.
Make a motion to appoint the four gentlemen listed in the agenda as our four burning officials.
Second? Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. Good. Okay, tax rebates. We have four this evening, Hyundai Lease Titleing Trust for $270.56. And that's for a vehicle that was sold in October of 2020. The second one is VW Credit Leasing Limited in the amount of $144.63 and that vehicle was a total loss, May of 2021. The third one is Darren Harvey. And it's for $85.08 and the vehicle is registered in Florida and has been since August of 2021. And the last one is Anne Alto Harvey for $21.47. Her vehicle again is registered in Florida as of August of 2021. So are we in agreement for these tax rebates?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Uh, let's see, correspondence and announcements. I have a letter from Emily Carlon dated February 16th. And it's the grand list and the grand list after revaluation that we just, just went through. The 2020, now it, it equates to a 29.2% increase over last year. And the totals are, the net grand list for 2020 was 735,000, I'm sorry, 735,000, 705,368. Did y'all get that?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. The 2021 grand list is $950,558,963. Now, as you know, with an increase in grand list, chances are your mill rate's going to go down. But you know, it's panic in the streets until that happens. So anyway.
So the, the previous lower number of 735, 700, that was what year?
2020.
2020. Okay.
And then the, the last one was 2021. Okay, um. Okay. Um, we had a hot, a fire on Woodstock Road, East Woodstock, going back some months. Number of people were displaced. One of the people displaced was a single veteran in his seventies and our veteran service officer got involved, was contacted, got involved. The VFW was involved, the VA. And so he has made arrangements through the Soldiers, Sailors and Marine Fund to raise cash. He's received $350 for clothing, $150. He's received $350 for clothing, $150 for food. The Red Cross had put him up for a short period of time, two or three days. And he has found housing in using other agencies. Money was raised or donated to him to help with his electric bill and his rent. The American Legion's been involved with him. Also, he has friends up in Auburn, Mass. That started a GoFundMe page. So anyway, the guy had nothing, lost everything, and he's in pretty good shape. So it worked out well. Let's see, I got the Troop D monthly report, Dear First Selectman Swan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. During the month of January 2022, there were 80 calls for service in Woodstock. Most notable are, there were seven accidents, 10 investigations, one burglary, one larceny, 61 non-reportable matters. And in addition, Troopers conducted motor vehicle enforcement. There was zero DUIs, one traffic citation and zero written warnings. Under ARPA, we have started. We have room one and room A downstairs. The wall panels were installed. Well, it's a good thing I have an announcement. Anyway, the soundproof panels were installed. Crystal and I were down there yesterday checking them out, talking to the installers. We also, in fact, there's a meeting going on there now. It's going to be on Zoom also. The ceiling tiles are in back order, but they will be going in. And this was all part of phase one under ARPA. The other thing is the folks that were going to be doing the Swan Industries, no relation, have been working downstairs replacing, and I misplaced my notes.
They've replaced two units, one in meeting room B.
Yep.
And one that controls the HVAC for meeting room C and D.
Okay. And this is the HVAC system that's the whole building. And as I said, and I think I gave you an update on that. I think the Tax Collector's Office, Linda, she's got one of the originals, 30 years old. And I think we're going to be shipping that up to Sturbridge Village. They need it.
Smithsonian.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that's coming along. Teague is presenting, Teague was here today, by the way. They're here a couple of times a month. They're presenting the Art of Budgeting presentation. It'll be on March 23rd, 5:30 to 6:30. And it's going to be at their headquarters in North Groverdale. Reservations required. And they give their phone number. These I think we're going to have on our website or Facebook page, Crystal?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Dinner on a dime, how to feed a family on a tight budget. It's a demonstration and dinner provided. It's going to be at Teague, reservations required. We've got a thank you card from NEPS for being included in our distribution of N95 masks and COVID testing kits. And I should mention, we're going to be doing, getting information out for COVID tests and N95 masks to folks that need them. Crystal and I were talking, she's concerned that we may have had some folks that slipped through the cracks. So we're going to be advertising on Facebook and on our town website. We've got a thank you letter from Teague. They received $310 in cash for the Woodstock Fuel Campaign. 796 non-perishable food items. And of that, 637 were collected on election day. And it was also 121 personal care items. We, I acquired a number of hair care items and I've been in contact with Teague, Daily Bread and Project Pen in Musa. And those are in storage now, but they're supposed to be picked up by the end of this month. They're going to be shared with those three. So when you go in to pick up whatever you need to pick up, you'll also have an option for hair care. And we've done this before with body lotion last year. We've got a thank you letter from the ARC for being included again in the distribution of the N95 masks and COVID testing kits. We've got a very nice letter from somebody from New Roxbury Village. And it was addressed to the agent for the elderly, but for the Christmas gift bag that they received as part of our giving tree. Which, you know, I thought was nice. Um, that pretty much covers it. Yeah. Questions, comments? No, no, good. All right. Do I hear? God, number 11, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Diane?
I don't have anything right now, but I think they did a super job plowing snow. And I'd like to thank the highway department for that.
Thank you, and I agree with you. Those guys are great. I mean, terrific. We have a reputation because I hear it frequently from other towns. And yeah, and I'm out, you know, driving around all the time after snow. And yeah, thank you for mentioning that. Any other comments? Do we have anybody on? Oh, come on, let's go see online. Um, okay. Now, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excellent.
Okay, second, all right. Thank you very much for joining us. I've got, what have I got?